Municipal clerk present and legislative council, Mr. Ekoloji is here present. And also is Mr. West Bridges. Thank you. And Madam President, if you wish, I'll read the invocation at this time.
Yes, thank you.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this, our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
All right. And Council President, it's my understanding you have some presentations this evening. I'll leave it to you to choose what you like first. I do see here we have Dr. Pamela Pruitt. Is that correct?
Yes, the only presentation we have this evening is from Dr. Pamela Pruitt, who represents Capital Health Institute for Urban Care.
Forgot. Thank you so much, Madam President, and to the distinguished members of our city council and to our city's leadership. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come here this evening and talk about our Institute for Urban Care at Capital Health. Before we move forward, I would like to give a land acknowledgement to those who came here before us, the Lenny Lenapi, reigned here for over 12,000 years. So if you wouldn't mind just taking a moment, closing your eyes, and imagining the ground upon which we stand that belonged to our forefathers. Thank you. So the Institute for Capital Health, for Urban Care at Capital Health, has been here for seven years. It's going on seven years now. And the mission of Capital Health is to improve the health and well-being of the populations as both in urban suburban communities. The map on the screen shows you something very interesting that our founder, his name is Dr. Eric Schwartz, he looked at this map those years ago, and he said, there's 90 years in life expectancy in the citizens of Princeton. In the citizens, with the citizens of Trenton, the life expectancy, 70 years. What is the difference? There's not that much distance between the two cities. The Institute for Urban Care, when he developed it, wanted to be able to coalesce and grow and align the services of Capital Health with the community and other partners. One of the most important things was the well-being of the community. As a result of an assessment that occurred in 2019, it came to be that the pillars of the Institute for Urban Care would be, one, chronic disease, maternal-child health, and behavioral health substance use, all standing on the foundation of our community, both internal and external. Meet the team. We are small, but we are mighty. We do a lot in the city of Trenton, and sometimes I say that we are the best-kept secret at Capital Health. But health is more than healthcare. If you look at that particular screen, and those of you that can see it, 80% of that total piece about health has nothing to do with going to the doctor. If you look in the lower left-hand corner, healthcare is only 20%. But the social determinants of health are all of those other behaviors that go toward our life expectancy or not. So the first thing I'd like to talk to you about is the Trenton Neighborhood Initiative. I am only going to give you a snapshot because of the time limitations. But there are four pillars, and if you can't remember anything else once you leave here tonight, remember the four pillars. Live, Work, Grow, and Connect. Under the Live particular pillar, mainly what captures everyone's attention is the $20,000 down payment that residents can have in buying a home. Now, we say first-time buy, a home buyers. If you live in Ewing, if you live in Lawrenceville, and you want to invest in a home in Trenton, New Jersey, you can get a $20,000 down payment, provided that you are not above the median income level, which is going according to the number of persons in your family. So that means that we want at Capital Health to invest in our community. So no matter where you live, you may be able to do that as long as you have not been a homeowner for the last three years. And we also do other things with home improvement, lead remediation, et cetera. And we are looking at, by the year of 2026, at the end of the six years that this particular grant has been available, that we are looking at doing 50 homes in the way of homeownership for our residents. Right now, we have 15 residents who have homes under these circumstances. If you look at the screen now, this is the funnel that people go through in this process, especially with the home buyer assistance. And again, with their lead remediation and the other things that we do in the Live pillar, this one stands out to most. At the top, you have to first become aware. And then there's the interest level. We have a partner, the New Jersey Community Capitals Address Yourself Program. And so what happens is the potential homeowners get to this part, and then they are vetted, and if they meet the requirements, it goes on to interest, then making a decision, and then action into home ownership. And that is why we can boast of 15 homeowners at this time. And then there's the Work pillar. That is all about putting folks to work. Whether they start off in college at Mercer County Community College, if they're on a healthcare track, we will give them up to $5,000. They can use it for whatever they want. It's not necessarily about tuition. We also have assistance for small business owners, loans and grants. And then we're working with the African-American Chamber, New Jersey, and looking at entrepreneurialship and what opportunities we can bring. With the Grow pillar, that's really, really important because a lot of our residents may need rental assistance, they may need car seats, they need a myriad of items that they can't put their hands on. Sometimes they've just reached a critical point where they have no hope, and they need some sort of way in order to to move forward in their living and growing experience. And therefore, they can call the number, we'll talk to them. There are so many different things that we do in advocacy for our residents. And they, there is a dollar amount with that for, you know, each family, like $3,000. So as long as they don't go over that, and we'll just help them when we can. Some people come back, you know, after they've been helped. It doesn't matter. We always want to be there for our residents. Also in the Grow pillar, I wanted to point this out because we have a mobile food pantry. We're at our Capital Health location on Hamilton twice a month, and also on Bellevue twice a month, which equates to alternating weeks. With our Connect program, when we give out computers at different, you know, universities, and Ray Ingram helps us a lot, we have to connect to the internet. So someone just calls up, says, we need internet. So we try to help support wherever we can so that our residents can have access to the world and what's going on in it. The Victory Program is our violence intervention program for trauma. I find it amazing, and I put you all in some same bucket with these folks here, the the trauma outreach specialists, God's angels, because they're doing work that nobody else probably wants to do. And it's really meaningful. So in 2020, through the Attorney General's Office, our team came into play. Now we partner with Mill Hill and Catholic charities. So basically, we get a report every day from the hospital at Regional where we are. And we find those that are victims of gunshot violence, stab wounds, anything. Domestic violence is not included, but everything else. Whatever the family needs, whatever the client needs, we don't usually call them a victim, but they are. But they're our clients. We work with them. We make sure they're safe. If by chance they have to succumb to their injuries, then we step in with the family, help with their funerals, help with the mental health part. We're there for them. It is a voluntary program, but we take their information if they want us to. And then we work with them all the way through the trauma, no matter what it takes. Once they're through the trauma and they go away, if they come back and say, listen, I'm having trouble again, we don't turn them away. We work with them again. And this is with all of our programs that we offer. So what you need to know basically about this particular Victory Program is that it is voluntary. Some people do say that they don't want the help. After all, think about it. Somebody calls you up or comes to your room in the hospital and says, I'm here to help you. The first thing that we think as Black people in particular and Brown people is, what's up? You know, what do you want in return? We don't want anything but your well-being. And so we have found though, through our program and the data that is projected, that 98% of those that go through the Victory Program are least likely to fall victim to re-injury. And then for my baby and me, it's quite simple. It's the mommies that have opioid addiction that are pregnant. And all we have to do is identify these females. We have to connect them to the proper services, and we have to treat them. Usually, they are people that are under the control of someone, and therefore, we have to get them in the first place. And so we work with Homefront, Catholic Charities, the Rescue Mission of Trenton, and the Trenton Health Team. And then people look at me and say, Dr. Pruitt, we know that you're a doctor of education, of course, because I'd call 911. What do you do? Basically, I'm the ambassador. Thank you very much for your time and for your attention.
On your call, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. First, before we continue, Dr. Pruitt, thank you again for coming in and speaking with us today. When we met a couple of weeks ago, and you explained everything that you have going on, I wanted to make sure that our community in the council definitely got to hear all of the wonderful programs that you had going on and looking forward, each of us, I'm sure, to working with you in some capacity to help our community. Thank you again, Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Madam President, according to our agenda, we've reached public comment at this time.
Okay.
Security could bring up the public comment clipboard. And just to note for the public, public comment will be five minutes long. Council President, we have four individuals signed up for public comment at this time.
Thank you.
And just so the public knows, you are able to address anything that you wish during public comment. Your limit is five minutes. The council is not, does not have to respond to you, though. Required to respond. First person up we have for public comment is, last name Kellyman. Is that correct? Thank you. You want to hit the button?
And just, I think we both signed up, but we're going to speak together, if that's okay. Yes.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Natalie Tong, and I'm the co-founder and executive director of Homeworks Trenton. Born and raised in Hong Kong, I had the opportunity to go to boarding school at Lawrenceville Prep right down the road. And being able to live with my teachers and have 24/7 support changed my relationship with learning. But more importantly, living with girls made me realize the power of woman and the power of community. I went on to receive my teaching license from Trenton Central High, but realized the limitations of what we could do within an eight-hour school day. So I thought, what would it look like to have a boarding school experience and bring it and make it accessible to all girls around the world, but start right here in Trenton, New Jersey?
And hello, I'm Dr. Danelle Kellyman. I am a Trenton native. I am from the West Ward and the South Ward. I have gone to my elementary school, Joyce Comer, junior three, junior four. This is my home. And I am here, I later went to Hampton University, then went to get my masters at Baruch College in New York, and just recently graduated with my educational leadership doctorate degree from the University of Pennsylvania. And I am here as a proud chief operating officer of Homeworks Trenton, bringing the resources, bringing our people back home. And so first, I want to thank you for this opportunity to present today. We are Homeworks, a free, community-based, after-school residential program. We are bringing the benefits of a boarding school experience to public schools. It is important to note that we are not interested in becoming a school. We do not want to replace our schools. We partner with our schools, and we bring the resources of a boarding school experience. And so from Sundays to Fridays, each day, our scholars receive over 180 days of dormitory living. Our scholars receive transportation, daily dinners. Our scholars receive over 600 hours between academic tutoring and study hall time, in addition to programming time. And that programming time looks like identity-driven leadership. What does that mean? That's all that self-escalation work. Who am I? My identity is situating their identity in their learning. Our scholars also receive over 35 hours of individual and group therapy. They take weekly field trips, and I will be remiss if I did not mention that our scholars, we partner with our scholars' parents in monthly potlucks, where they bring their delicious food, and we bring ourselves. And we have a great time talking about the work of Homeworks.
Homeworks started in 2016 as a summer pilot for four weeks with five scholars. We then transitioned into a semester program, a COVID-day program, a school-year program, and now a four-year program where our scholars start from their freshman year and go all the way to their senior year. Last year, I'm proud to say that we ended the year with a 98% attendance rate, a 0% chronic absenteeism rate, and we went from an average of a 2.8 GPA to a 3.45 GPA. We also now have two alumni, DeRay, who is at Montclair State University, studying marketing and potentially going into political science on a full-ride scholarship with one of our partner organizations, Give Something Back, and Cameron, who is in her first year at TCNJ studying computer science, one of the top computer science programs in the state. We also have here today our scholars, our team and partners, who are here with us and partnering with us, our co-founders within our work. And we are humbled to be recognized by Penn GSC, The Rachel Ray Show, Assemblywoman Reynolds Jackson, McKinsey, and more. Ultimately, our Homeworks model will equip our scholars with the confidence and the tools to not only achieve economic freedom and empowerment, but to also one day become leaders within our community. Whether it is one day they will be sitting right here, right alongside of you in your seats, making important decisions for our city, or becoming the first woman president of the United States.
We believe in investing in our scholars. We believe by investing in our scholars, we are actually investing in our local and global community. The impact of the Homeworks model is not simply recognized within the four-year period that we have our scholars, but the footprint has the implications for years to come. We recognize and celebrate the community assets. We do not come with a deficit mindset. We believe in the city of Trenton. We know the power in our city, and that is why we recently bought a property at 1212 Edgewood in August 2021. And just last week, we were approved for nearly a $2.1 million renovation grant.
I know we're almost out of time, so I'll just say very quickly, there are three main benefits to our project. Program sustainability and growth and cost savings, being an anchor within the community. But most importantly, this building, as you know, has been unoccupied for over 10 years. And our goal is not only to revitalize this building, but to build relationships with our neighborhood as well. And so we really appreciate your consideration for our $100,000 ask to grow our program and help bring us home. Thank you so much.
I have, let's see. Is this L-L-I-G-N, another individual, Homeworks? I have a Noah, and somebody else can... There we go.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
If you could just kindly remind everybody of the time limit, the five minutes. Thank you.
Just to re-announce the time limit, it will be five minutes for all, for a public comment. Okay? And you can begin, please. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Noah. I'm 15 years old. I'm currently attending Foundation Collegiate Academy. And this is my first year as a Homeworks scholar.
I'm Iliana. I am 16 years old. I go to STEM Civics, and I'm a sophomore. And this is my, currently my second year at Homeworks.
I just want to start off by saying that knowledge is power, and not only that knowledge is power, but the youth is our future. And with Homeworks, they really definitely help us with not only our education, but understanding our identity and our impact on those around us in our community. And I really appreciate them for what they do and the resources that they provide as they have helped me understand who I am as a person and who I want to be in the future.
When I first joined Homeworks, I wasn't sure about the curriculum and how it was going to be. But after joining, and as it's been in my second year, I'm very grateful for the opportunity. And I've met so many great young girls, scholars, and I have made great connections with the staff. And I feel like this program really helped me towards my future and in college. And we have learned many great things in how to stand up for ourselves and had many field trips to, like, just help grow ourselves and evolve.
As minorities and young Black women and people of color, Homeworks, they had allowed us to embrace ourselves and the knowledge that we hold. And with that, we're able to embrace each other and build a community where we can build together and build a future. And I'm really appreciative of that, and we're able to indulge in our ambitions and look forward to college in the future and whatever it comes and brings to us, and yeah.
And not only does Homeworks help us students and girls, it also involves the families, like potlucks, and we're able to bring our siblings and other family members to also make new connections, to help them with their future.
It's a community, and I hope that people realize that it's not just a one-person job. We all help each other, and we're all willing to help each other. And we're dedicated to this program because of not only what it brings to us and the benefits that we have for ourselves, but the benefits that we can bring for each other.
Homeworks, personally, Homeworks has done a lot for me. And honestly, I don't think I would be the person I am at this moment without Homeworks because it just really, once you join, it really makes a huge impact on your life. And even though it might be tough at times, you're, they help you push through it. So there's really no problem.
This is my first year as a Homeworks scholar. I've been going here for only a few months. And within those months, I was able to develop a lot of communicational and social skills. I was able to participate in activities and view universities and dream of a future that I could possibly have for myself. Although I've been in this marginalized community for so many years, I've seen that there's a brighter future out there for us. And it's not just for those who have the privileges to take advantage of those advantages.
And I'm really looking forward to my next two years as a junior and senior for our new internship opportunities, helping us with our resume for jobs and having more opportunities with the field trips and all of that stuff that you need to live and succeed.
This program is worth investing in. Invest in your youth, please, because as we are the future, we are going to be those in power sooner or later. And the process of getting to that point is to make sure that our youth is educated. Being in this program exposes me to educational and, sorry, educational opportunities that allow me to expand my knowledge. And now I'm up here today, able to express my passion. Thank you.
Forty-five seconds.
Honestly, I never would have thought I would be standing here, speaking in front of the city council. Like, who, who, who do you know dream, as a student, dreams of that in Trenton, New Jersey? So I'm just really grateful for this opportunity. And yeah, Homeworks is a great place to invest in, and I hope to see more of it in the future.
Yes, I agree. I hope to see that this community expands and is shared with other girls like us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Tong, and Doc, if you have business cards, if you could give them to Jorge or Mr. Garcia, please, so that we can have it for council. And I just want to say real quick before we continue, it's a phenomenal program. I actually had a student from Trenton High, I teach at the high school as well, who came through your program. And I've written a letter of recommendation for another one that was looking to get into the program. So the works that you do are tremendous and great. And then to the young ladies that spoke, wonderful job, great articulation, wonderful representation. And then for all of you that are here tonight to stand on what it is that you want and what you believe in, I commend each and every one of you, and thank you for taking the time out to come before us, right? Because you are the future, and we do need to get ready to have you take over. Thank you.
Council President? Council? That's fine.
Ms. Tong, I said quickly. Did, did you all come before zoning board like three or four years ago for approval? Okay. I'm just, I would like to suggest if you could possibly send any of the designs or the final rendering of the building to my colleagues, I think they would love to see that.
I definitely will, and I remember you being on the zoning board. So really appreciate everything. Thank you.
Certainly. Madam President, we want to, we'll move on to communications and, or going through the docket anyway. You have minutes for, that will be for Thursday, your Thursday approval. With the exception of November 2nd and December 21st, those minutes will be up for your approval. They've been sent to you recently. You, we are now communication of some petitions. I will note for number 2J, which reads, "An official petition to council members, Trenton, New Jersey, notification of national movement to cut back on quality-of-life leasing methods such as making arrests for vandalism, littering, loitering, vagrancy, public intoxication, and other quality-of-life violations." That is a petition in opposition. I just wanted to make that known, to make that noted, and we will make an adjustment if necessary. Outside of that, you have your communications and petitions. And from communications to petitions, that moves us to ordinances for second reading and public hearing, if you'd like me to go through those.
Yes.
Certainly. Ordinance 24-007. Ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Trenton, traffic four-way stop intersections as it applies to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Ingham Avenue. Ordinance 24-008. Capital ordinance providing for improvements to the West State Street and San Heaton Drive Improvement Project 11 by the City of Trenton and County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,309,938 to pay for the costs thereof, which amount will be funded by a grant from the fiscal year 2024 municipal aid program received or expected to be received by the city from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Ordinance 24-009. Ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Trenton, traffic one-way street as it applies to Hill Avenue. Ordinance 24-10. Ordinance continuing certain positions, fixing salaries therefore, and setting forth certain regulations for the implementation of same analyst-trainee, analyst-purchasing agent, excuse me, assistant purchasing agent, senior purchasing assistant, senior program development specialist, aging, and yard supervisor. Ordinance 24-11. Ordinance to revise certain positions, fixing salary ranges therefore, and setting forth certain regulations for the implementation of same administrative secretary, employee benefit specialist, paralegal specialist, account clerk, senior account clerk, principal account clerk, management assistant, sanitary driver. Ordinance 24-12. An ordinance amending and supplementing Section 150-3 of the Trenton City Code relating to penalties for illegal dumping. And Madam President, if there's no questions regarding those ordinances at this time, I'll move into resolutions.
Any questions from any members of council? You may continue. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Madam President, are there, if there's any resolutions that you or the council would like to exclude from a consent agenda, you can go ahead and note those. I'll also note that we do have three walk-on resolutions that are add, or additions to the agenda per docket review. Those resolutions are resolution appointing members to the Housing Authority of Trenton Board of Commissioners. There are two resolutions for that purpose, Resolutions 80 and 81, as well as Resolution 82, which notes liaisons to boards and commissions.
At this time, council, are there any resolutions that you'd like pulled to decide off of consent agenda that you will have questions for? Now is the time to please indicate. Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. I have questions on twenty four oh five zero. Twenty four zero five five. Twenty four zero five seven. Twenty four zero five eight. And twenty four, uh, zero six one. And twenty four zero seven one.
Twenty four zero seven one?
Seven one.
Thank you.
Yep, and twenty four zero one four.
Thank you. Is that it, Councilwoman Williams?
And that was an ordinance, the last one. Yes, ma'am.
The ordinance, thank you.
Council President, if I may interject with your permission?
Yes.
Administration is pulling twenty four zero fourteen. Noted. Zero fourteen, you say, specifically for further discussions with, um, Councilwoman Williams and some other council members.
It's the ordinance, Mr. Garcia?
Yes, ordinance for first reading ordinance twenty four dash fourteen, you said pulled by administration. Thank you. That's correct. Noted.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilwoman Edwards.
When we get to this consent agenda, I would like to address that, the twenty four dash zero fourteen. Why it was pulled and to also make comments on the record.
Okay.
Madam President.
Is that, is that the Councilwoman Edwards? I'm sorry. Okay, Council Vice President. I'm sorry.
If there's going to be questions, then it shouldn't be pulled because. So if you want to ask questions, then we could pull it. I'll unpull it pending the questions.
Okay, so can we do that? But then can we finish through the council? With what they would they would like to remove from the consent agenda, then we'll swing back around.
Absolutely.
That one. Thank you, Director Bridges. Council Vice President.
Madam President, I would just like to have discussion for twenty four zero five two.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So this is not a discussion, but, um, we are, we are going into executive session with twenty four dash zero five four, right?
That's correct. Um, being there's no council here, we don't have to have that at the front for the public's benefit. We could address that at the end of the meeting if that's council's will.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
You have any other question? Councilwoman Gonzalez?
I'm, I'm good.
Councilman Harrison?
Councilman Harrison? Are there any items from the, uh, that you, are there any matters that you wish to pull from a consent agenda at this time other than what's been previously mentioned? Okay. Oh, the ruffling, I'm sorry, that will be me. I'll try and get you a little further from the. There we are. Okay, Madam President.
So before we continue, excuse me, with that, um. They, there are questions on twenty four zero fourteen. Before the administration would pull it, so do we go over that now or do we establish what's going to be on the consent agenda and then do that?
Um, if we're going in order of the docket, then we could, uh, establish what's going on the consent agenda.
Okay, so council, we will get to twenty four zero one four. Let us just establish, excuse me, what is going to be on the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. So Madam President, with the exception of oh four nine, which would put us into executive session. I have a consent agenda consisting of twenty four dash zero five one. Zero five three, zero five six, zero five nine. Zero sixty, zero sixty two, sixty three, sixty four, sixty five. Sixty six, sixty seven, sixty eight, sixty nine, seventy. Seventy two, seventy three, seventy four, seventy five, seventy six, seventy seven, seventy eight, seventy nine. And we will be including eighty, eighty one and eighty two. And that's the consent agenda that I have at this time.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilwoman Edwards.
Apologies, as I did not realize the walk-ons were included. But, uh, resolution twenty four dash zero eight, zero or zero eight one, they're stapled together. But I wanted to bring attention to the second whereas. It says that the housing authority consists of six members, five of which shall be appointed by the governing body. And one by the mayor, all of which shall be residents of Trenton. There, if, correct me if I'm wrong, there's actually seven members of the housing authority. And that seventh member is actually appointed by the governor. So should that be one here as well?
I'll have to research that, Councilwoman, and if that's the case, we will prepare a new resolution for both. I think, I think that's a prudent move if, if that be the case, just to make it very clear.
It's on our city's website. I don't know. It's not that of the date either, but.
No, we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, correct that.
So can I, excuse me. And we can, may I ask a question? And that is, that is valid. One is appointed by the governor. Can we, um. Move to amend, can we amend this on the floor so we can vote on this? Is it something we can still just make the adjustment to and then vote on it? Or is it something we have to wait on?
Either's.
I mean, we don't know we vote on Thursday. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Council President, either's proper. I think the, the best practice would be to revise it being that it's going to be minimal revision. So you can have all encompassed, um, resolution that you're voting on instead of doing it by way of putting it on the record.
Thank you.
And if I may, if I may also, um, make one suggestion, Madam President. Um, being that today is the working session, I know that there's been a lot of resolutions and ordinances where there's been some questions. We have the directors here on Tuesday, so if there are specific granular questions about the details of these resolutions. I think we should address those questions now while the folks with the knowledge are in the room.
Thank you, Director Bridges. We are going to do that. Excuse me, that's why we pulled the ones off of consent agenda. So we're going to go back and then question and work our way through that. All right.
Perfect. Thank you. When you call, Madam President?
Continue.
Uh, this time then, if we have the, if we've established consent agenda, you may wish to, uh. Speak with any of the directors or any other individuals or entertain questions for the, uh, pulled items from the consent agenda.
So if we could start with twenty four zero one four, because that's the one that, um. Director Bridges was saying that they were going to look to pull. So we'll open the floor to council members, um, for anyone that has questions on that.
Uh, so, um, a question on that, Madam President.
Okay.
So I would actually like, um, further clarification on that, whether or not that includes the downtown area. That we're talking about, is this residential? Is it both? Um, so we can establish how this actually affects the community.
If I may, Council President?
Yes.
Um, I'll speak to this. Mr. Beach, um, is not here today. But, um, the thought was there are certain legacy establishments, restaurants. And to answer your question, give you a short answer, it, it is citywide. Um, there are certain legacy operations where if it goes through a change of ownership. Um, i- if they fall within the confines of that, um, the distance that buffer. That they're no longer allowed to operate the same restaurant, uh, the same establishment that they're purchasing. So the thought behind this, um. Ordinance was to put it in council's hands, but make it very narrowly tailored. And that it has to be an establishment that was previously operating as a bar slash restaurant. And ultimately puts the decisions in council's hands if there's an entity and establishments that fall within the definition of legacy establishment. To give this council the authority and ability to make exceptions for, for those properties. Um, the reason, just to be clear with council, while, um, we're suggesting pulling it. As I understand, we feel a lot of questions from council members that rightfully should be asked. And I think, um, looking at it while it's legal as the form and substance, um, I think there's some additional language to make it clear. That this is not opening the city up to liquor establishments throughout the city. It has to fall into a very specific definition. Of establishment that was operating as such and make it clear that this council is ultimately going to be the ultimate decision maker. With respect to granting those exceptions. So, um, being that there were so many questions. Um, administration thought it best to have that dialogue with council and, and air any concerns that anyone may have before re-presenting this to this body.
So thank you, Mr. Bridges. So, um, so this is pretty much applicable to. Those that were previously established with a liquor license, whether it was, whether they're active or inactive. Is that correct?
That's correct. Whether they were active or inactive. So if a, if a restaurant was operating for ten, fifteen years. And then, you know, the operation shuttered and the building remained for, you know, a, a certain period of time not to exceed a certain amount of years. And someone is coming into our city wanting to invest in the city and reopen and reestablish that facility as a, as a restaurant. Um, obviously, they're going to want to have the liquor license piece with that from a, just a business standpoint. So it's simply places, establishments, restaurants that were operating as such in the city of Trenton for a period of time. Where someone is coming back in to reactivate, reinstitute that business in the city of Trenton. It's not for someone who's going to construct a new property, not for someone who's going to take a, a home or, or something and convert it into a restaurant. It has to be a legacy, um, establishment that was there. And we have documentation and proof that they were operating as such for a long period of time.
And that goes along with even those who, even if it's a transfer from one owner to the other owner.
That, that is actually, and again, that's, these are the conversations that need to be had. That's actually would not fall within this. Because if they were doing a liquor license transfer, they would be actually taking that license that's already set up and attached to that establishment. So it's really, it, it, there's a lot of, there's a lot of nuance here, which is why we want to have that dialogue with council. So that, um, not only the council, but the public fully appreciates and understands. The evaluation and, and the thought process into trying to support these legacy buildings, establishments. That someone wants to come back into and, and start operations again, uh, as a restaurant with a liquor license tied to, uh, tied to it.
Thank you, Mr. Um, Wes. I will reserve the rest of my questions for when we have a full discussion with council. Thank you, sir.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate the administration for taking the initiative yet again to bring forth, um, amending this ordinance. As it's pertinent to us to address the issues of our downtown and entertainment districts. Um, to incentivize economic development. Um, with the ordinance twenty four dash zero one four. It references the only change to the liquor license ordinance that we have in the city of Trenton. Is an amendment to section H two. And it's to add in, um. City Council may approve an application. So this is talking about approving the license within the thousand feet. That our current ordinance restricts us from doing. So in certain areas. So I wanted to suggest as we're doing that, I do like that and appreciate it. But as we're doing that, once we add, um, that language in there, I would like for us to refer to section D. And add in specifically the language of the blocks and the lot numbers of the properties that are permissible to. Obtain a liquor license within those a thousand feet of another, um, the way that we have for Robin Entertainment District. Because downtown, um, it is mixed with residential. So i- if we're referencing downtown as a whole, we want to be careful not to go into those areas. So, uh, as the way that Robin did for their area, for their entertainment area, I would like to recommend that we do the same. Um, I've begun a list if you like me to forward that as well, so you can save yourself some of the groundwork on that. Um, but, uh, I think it's, I think it's pertinent on us to establish downtown in certain areas. South Warren Street, uh, East State Street, Broad Street areas as entertainment districts. And allow people to be side by side with liquor licenses with various businesses, whether that would be. A nightclub, a lounge, a wine bar, our current existing restaurants and things like that. Not like a liquor store or things. But actual entertainment places where people could come and congregate and be entertainment, um, be entertained in other ways besides a liquor store. So, um, there was something else. There's also a four hundred foot buffer from restaurants that is in section C one. That I would also like for us to, um, look at as well. So again, just aligning ourselves with the language of getting rid of those buffers in certain districts. That maybe we could look at section C one where it says four hundred feet from, uh, restaurants, eliminating that as well. So not just in, in our entertainment districts, but restaurants around the city should be able to be side by side. In our restaurant districts and not be four hundred feet away so that we can, um, invite more businesses into our town. And also, um, I don't know if the language is there establishing an entertainment district downtown. But if that's not in there, uh, section H two is the locations, uh, in this ordinance. So, uh, at the end of it, it only mentions Robin Entertainment District. I would like for us to add downtown entertainment district to that language as well.
Council President, if I may briefly respond?
Yes, thank you.
I think they're all very good points and, and very consistent with, um, the administration's review of this. And also consistent with the conversations that we, um, will be having with council. Um, but with respect to entertainment district and the downtown, I think this is really part one of what's more to come. To address, uh, address ju- just that issue and been making it very clear. So, um, the reason for us wanting to revisit this is to have these discussions, get council's input and make as robust of. Re- robust of revisions as we can at this juncture with understanding that hopefully, um, we will be able to address the downtown entertainment, uh, area. I know Councilwoman Williams was, um, interested in having a, a little bit of a study with this and seeing what the thought was with downtown. And I know that that's something that has been looked at and, I mean, I think we all can look at it just from being a vibrant, bustling act of downtowns. Uh, you know, entertainment district downtown, I would not be surprised if you have a resolution ordinance coming before you. Before the end of twenty twenty for eliminating that for just the reasons that you stated.
Thank you so much. Council President.
Councilwoman Williams.
So I, yes, I do want to comment on this, um, I have a bit to say. So actually Trenton Downtown Association is very concerned about this. Other, uh, business entities are very concerned about this. Because we actually started off with trying to create a restaurant row. And have places that are currently B O B, B Y O B, be able to serve alcohol to help build up their businesses. And then, uh, when that was brought forth to us, we did have some folks who either would like to start a business or currently have, uh. Liquor licenses from businesses they owned previously, uh, bring attention to, um. The idea that there would be a difference in hours, that may be a competitive disadvantage, uh, even though new businesses often in the. Um, the bar restaurant industry, uh, do have probationary periods even. Where they start off with reduced hours until they show that they can adhere and follow A B C rules. And I think, uh, we didn't even get to that discussion as a point anyway. But then it turned into other issues, uh, regarding underage drinking, people being over served, et cetera. And now we find ourselves six months later, uh, after we were supposed to have a study. Um, I was actually, a really great suggestion by our plan to, uh, interim, I guess, I don't know if you had the title, Michael Culver. Um, planning department to hire a consultant. I fully support it as did others, including T D A. Um, unfortunately, we were not able to find someone to do a study. I think we should be putting out, um, an effort to do that, hire a proper consultant as we did with Mr. Latini. For cannabis, I thought that was a very effective measure for our city. Because, you know, going from what was supposed to be an entertainment district in downtown where I'd like to emphasize there are many residents. In downtown, we're going to be adding the former Holiday Inn Hotel will be becoming, uh, a residence location. With many people living in condos. Um, there's always people being, uh, moving in. We have apartments over Slamming Brew that's coming soon. So, you know, I believe we have to also remind ourselves when we're discussing this, there are people living downtown. There are businesses who aren't entertainment businesses. But also having something that comes forth under originally the guise of an entertainment district ordinance. Become an expansive, the entire city ordinance. To me, um, I'm not criticizing anyone, um, or besmirching anyone, but I feel that that's irresponsible. For us to enlarge something without having a professional consultant that we've hired to look at. for us to enlarge something without having a professional consultant that we've hired to look at these issues who's practiced in liquor law, et cetera, and examples from other cities. Because, you know, once we do this, we have to do this right. We have to make sure we're not building the wrong kind of alcohol ordinance. We're not building in places where people don't want to live, where situations get out of control. Having traveled, having lived in New Orleans, seeing Bourbon Street, Memphis, even Tampa and the way they've handled their districts with entertainment, it is handled as its own district. It's handled where they have strict controls. And then even in this ordinance, when we have a clause, and actually, I would like to say, looking at this ordinance as presented, doesn't show any strikeouts. So it doesn't look like there's any change from before. But I was surprised to know that we apparently allowed operators of license holders to be open to four AM on New Year's Day, which as someone who worked in intoxicated driving resource program, that actually really makes me nervous because a lot of accidents, the statistics, we'd have to review them, and that's where a consultant will come in, do occur usually after two AM for drunk driving. And having had to speak with a parent who lost a child in a drunk driving accident where the child was the victim of the driver, we, I just want to remind us, ourselves that we really need to make sure we go one step at a time with this. And I know a lot of work has been put into this and I appreciate that. But I do think going forward, whether it's for an entertainment district downtown or this is around the city, no matter what we do with alcohol, we have to be very careful because we want a successful entertainment district. I certainly want to see that in downtown as someone who represents the North Ward. But also to my colleague's point earlier, the list of businesses or legacy businesses, we should know who those businesses are. Because just as, you know, anybody who grew up here a lo, for a long time, Di Lorenzo's on Hudson Street was able to operate without a bathroom. That was never, as far as I know, in an ordinance, but it was just grandfathered in. If we're going to be grandfathering in, that's like when in zoning or planning, someone does something that they shouldn't do and they come back to zoning or planning to get a legal remedy to fix the problem before they sell the property, et cetera, or you try to get the C L. So I would like to see this pulled this evening to give us a time to really talk about this issue, research this issue. I would love for our city to find a qualified consultant to look at this because I share my colleagues' concerns about building a thriving entertainment district. But we also have many Trentonians who do not partake in entertainment, do not go out and also just want to work and live in a city that they feel comfortable living in. And if they have to drive, you know, in the middle of the night to go somewhere, you know, I'd like to make sure we're taking care of that too. Because there's other things we could be doing to discourage drunk driving in the city, which is a problem with a city that has so many bars. Thank you, ma'am.
Council, Council President, I could just address a couple of points. Again, this is not law department's ordinance, but I'm, I'm discussing it based on conversations I had.
Mr. Bridges, whose ordinance is it?
A G D.
Thank you, continue.
Okay. Number one, taking into account Councilwoman Williams' concerns, it's, it, the, the reason that the ordinance is narrowly tailored because it does deal with legacy restaurant operations. So this is not something where the community in that area is going to say, oh, no, there's a restaurant opening up across the street from me. They moved to that restaurant. That restaurant was already in operation. So it's not a new establishment. With respect to the study, I have not been involved with the details with you and Mr. Beach with respect to the study, but had, having a conversation with him, we may have difficulty finding a expert to opine on the buffer requirement. And one of the things that the conversations I have had with entities who I've attempted to reach out to is they're referring us to other cities similarly situated that have a vibrant downtown entertainment area. I don't think anyone in the city of Trenton or anybody sitting in this building today would say that we don't want a downtown entertainment area. I think one of the biggest things that the city would benefit from would be opening downtown up and actually having a real downtown where there's actually activity. And as I sit here today, I can't think of any town that has that type of success in their downtown that has this buffer, including ones that we looked at, such as Princeton, such as New Brunswick, such as downtown Newark. So I, I guess that's something, further conversation for Mr. Beach to have with you. But I think that your, your concerns and council's concerns are persuasive to the reason why we wanted to pull this today, having feel that those quite candidly good questions so that we could have more dialogue on all those issues.
Thank you. Council Vice President.
Oh, Councilwoman, who was it?
Council President, I was going to speak, but Council Edwards with Councilwoman Edwards will speak first.
Hi, sorry. We were just having a conversation about in what order. I just wanted to, before we moved on, speak to the meeting that I was also in with Councilwoman Williams and T D A about the study and things like that and about the entertainment district or restaurant row downtown. The, the biggest issue and fear is public safety. That's the biggest fear. It was addressing what if one person goes to this bar or establishment and gets inebriated and goes to another bar or establishment and, and gets served again and now they're, you know, unable to function. And how are establishments going to be able to tell that and, and things like that? Well, the ordinance definitely speaks to that and they are, people are strictly prohibited from serving directly or indirectly to mentally impaired, habitual drunkard or any person actually or apparently intoxicated, or permit the same to congregate in or around the licensed premises. I brought that up in the meeting to say that you can pretty much tell when someone is intoxicated. And I made some suggestions that if there is security, if they can do something to where they can have a breathalyzer so that they're being tested at their toxicity levels to prevent them from being over served and, or the main number one suggestion is having a public safety plan for each licensee holder with T P D. So if T D A can facilitate a relationship between the new businesses and existing businesses coming in, establish a public safety plan with our police department, then we can kind of ease some of those fears as we move forward with bringing this to fruition. So I think that that would settle a lot of fears. As we look at other places, I would like to bring attention to many of the downtowns that we leave Trenton to go to, where they have establishments side by side and they are safe. They have, there are events called bar crawls where people go to different bars on the same day and have wristbands and events like that. And, and they're just tasting beer. They're not drinking to get drunk because some people do. You can't control everyone. But there's matters of public safety plans, whereas T D A does have a budget to hire security to help with the outside areas in each establishment that has a bar or, or something like that to hire security. So if we come up with some type of solutions along those lines, I feel as though that this can work and our fears will become obsolete eventually. But we have to be preventative rather than reactionary. I'm not sure what that study would have told us, but I just think that just take from experiences, the places that you've gone to and what your experiences were there and what you observed there and imagine that here in Trenton. And let's lead with optimism rather than stigmatization on our capital city. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President.
So I let Councilwoman Edwards go first, but she said a lot of the things that I wanted to say. That's okay. You know, in, in terms of like being nowhere for residents to go, you know, or they don't, they don't frequent a lot of places in the city of Trenton, it's because they don't have a lot of places to go. We want to give them the variety. We want to open up the opportunity for them to be able to go out and experience life. And we're not just talking all bars and nightclubs. We're talking restaurants, you know, maybe a liquor license or whatever and they could venture out. You know, people, I'm sure my fellow council members and other people in the audience, we've gone to Boardentown, we've gone to Philadelphia, we've gone to other places where, you know, you can go from place to place to place and it's a different restaurants, a different bar, a different, you know, nightlife activity or area. And, you know, we are under the pretenses that people are going to either be responsible for themselves or the, or the bar owners, the restaurant owners are going to be responsible for the people who come into their businesses. Because to obtain a liquor license, you need to be responsible. You need to maintain yourself to a certain standard or, you know, you're going to be fined, your liquor license is going to be taken or what have you. And if we can have more places for people to go that are more local, they can Uber, they can take taxis. It's closer for them. You know, they're not venturing outside to other areas where there are more opportunities for them to get DUIs or have car crashes or get drunk and drive, drunken driving accidents and things of that nature. I think that we need to really broaden our horizons and open our minds to the possibilities that Trenton can be. You know, we're no different in other cities. We, we are our own stigma in the city of Trenton. We are our own stigma. I feel like, like I said, the, the business owners have the responsibility. We put pressure on the business owners every day. We sit up here with A B C and we, you know, we tell them when they're wrong. We tell them when they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. We, we have to be open to the possibilities. I feel like, you know, we can have more than one entertainment district in the city of Trenton. We can have downtown, T D A and, and that also, we could also have the Roblin district. It's no different than what we had, you know, back in the sixties and seventies. You know, we're just trying to, to rebuild it and bring it back now. And we just have a more diverse audience and a more diverse population. I am for this ordinance. I am for, you know, some provisions. And if some of my council colleagues want to have some tweaks and turns here and there, you know, I'm for conversation about that. But I just want to say on the record, I am for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. I won't be long. It's just the same. I also am in support of the ordinance as my colleagues did state. We do want to see downtown Trenton thriving and have this entertainment district as someone who does like to go out into the restaurants and eat fine dining, have a live band play and enjoy good music with a cocktail. So I just want to say I do agree with the public safety plan. I think that was a great suggestion. So thank you, Councilwoman Edwards, for adding that. If we do it in a safe way, I think we can actually have something that will attract people to come into our city. As far as the residents and respects to them, we do want to be respectful of them. So having their input is important. So thank you for bringing that. I'm Councilwoman Williams. But we do have plenty of parking because my concern was parking originally, but we have parking lots that are underutilized and it would be great if we can get those parking lots going and we have enough parking spaces. So I just wanted to say on record that I do support this with, of course, some amendments and, you know, considering everyone's suggestions also. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President. So I just want to say, I am up for having a discussion on this. I do want to hear more from the administration on this. I do want to say on the record, I do not want to put a negative stigma on Trenton. Everything that we do does not have to have a negative connotation to it. And I don't want something like this to be that either. Every other city can have a, and has, majority of them, a thriving downtown business. If we want to draw people, want to have the money kept here, we want the revenues to be kept here, we have to allow the business to, in order to operate that way. And yes, we absolutely need to have it done safely. So always want to take safety into consideration. And we wanted this also, having these types of business to be able to, these restaurants that own their liquor license side by side also gives the other mom and pops an opportunity to grow as well. So all of this, one has an effect on the other, gives the, the domino effect. So I'm not saying no to this at all. I just want to say I'd like to have it for further review. I'm all for having a thriving downtown. I'm all about safety at all times and that is above all, is always safety. But I'm also for opening up our city and I want to make sure that we afford our citizens the same opportunity that other communities are allowing their communities to have. We need to open up for business. We need to be able to allow the community to actually take part in their community instead of when four o'clock, five o'clock, the state closes, we shut down. We don't want to shut down. That means you have to allow some of the businesses to be open. And yes, these are the types of things that we're going to have to allow. So thank you for my additional time.
Council President.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm gonna save mine till the very, very end. I'm trying to get there. Go ahead.
I'd like to ask Mr. Garcia a question. He may not have the answer, but I think this would be a good historical information. Pre, I'd say, we'll say mid nineteen sixties, early seventies, do you have any idea how many liquor licenses were issued for downtown Trenton versus the number we have today? Is that researchable? Okay, could I ask you to research that, please? Okay. So I just want to say, ma'am, neither myself nor, I believe, anyone in this council has said that we should not have any liquor establishments downtown. We haven't even said how many we want downtown. We've all said that we want a thriving downtown, but a thriving downtown doesn't only mean you need to have a liquor license. If you look at old pictures of what downtown was in the fifty, sixty, seventies, we had a multitude of different businesses. We had a variety of different businesses. But one current thing that was, you know, to everything was people lived near downtown. We unfortunately bulldozed most of our, like half of actually our downtown residents going to the Delaware River, going towards the ballpark when we built all the state buildings. So that's gone. So when you don't have a population, but, you know, historically, it looks like we're in a bad place, but we have people moving into downtown. And I'm the full supporter. I'd like to see more restaurants. Having lived in cities, having traveled this great country, having seen other entertainment districts, I know we could do it. But we need to do it. And I'm going to pull an old term from the nineteen nineties, smart growth. We need to be smart about how we're doing this. And changing the buffers, yeah, that's something that's going to have to happen, obviously, if we're going to have more places. But we need to decide how many liquor licenses we want to have downtown. And I know that is not going to be an infinite number, but we only have an infinite number of licenses. And that license system is based on a much higher population sociologically when people drank a lot more. There's a lot of interesting articles last seven years, how Generation Z, Generation Y, and even younger millennials are not drinking as much as they used to before. So even a lot of sports stadiums, concert halls are cutting back on beer stands because they don't have the business to support hiring employees and staffing them. So, you know, when we do this, let's just think, you know, a little bit deeper rather than you're either for it or against it. Because I think we're all for it. And I think we can find a happy medium, but the happy medium is not tonight. I think we need to talk about this further. And I appreciate that Mr. Bridges was willing to pull this so we could have that time and that conversation. Thank you, ma'am.
Council President, I'm sorry. I have the councilman who wishes to speak. Councilman Harrison, go ahead.
I would like to say, we're talking about downtown, the entertainment district. Everybody agrees with that. With the Roblin Entertainment District, has this been signed off by Detective Cologne, the A B C officer? Has she seen this plan?
I don't know the answer to that question. I think it's, Council President, if I may, I don't know the answer to that question. I think that's something for Mr. Beach to address when he's present. I'll, I'll give you what I got, but I don't have that.
They don't know, Councilman Harrison.
I, I cannot hear. What was that?
The answer is they do not know.
They do not know. So, yeah, it should be pulled until Detective Cologne and Director Wilson, we get their input. Because you're right, the difference is downtown, we don't have as much population. In the Roblin area, we have a large population. So I would love to hear their input because I think as the A B C officer, she should have a giant input into the direction because she does her job very well. And I think that that input can go better for us to making a decision on where we should go. So my, my, my recommendation is to pull it until we have other people like, you know, Detective Cologne and other people look into this because I have a concern about this.
Council President, might be respond briefly, briefly. Again, Councilman Harrison, just so I'll speak up, so you can hear me. I did represent early before we discussed this, that we were pulling this so that these conversations could be had. So yes, it, it will be pulled today.
I could not hear that. It was all mumbles.
Yeah. Councilman Harrison, can you hear me? Okay, the item is going to be pulled. You're welcome. Absolutely.
So I just, I just want to say this, right? And I was trying to keep all my thoughts together and being respectful of my colleagues who has
And I was trying to keep all my thoughts together and being respectful of my colleagues who has great questions and made wonderful statements. First, let me say this. Um, I'd love the, the individual thought process that each of you us exhibit, right? As we go through things, not at one time though, that I think that Councilwoman Williams was trying to say anything negative about downtown or what she wanted as far as, um, building up the downtown community, right? She's never been against anything for building up our city. She's always been for building up especially downtown and her north ward. So, I just want to be clear with that, and I thank her for her diligence and looking into things further to make sure that whatever's being done is being done right. For me, my question is this. We speak about legacy. We speak about the, um, the concept of if something happened for an establishment while it was there before, then if someone takes over that establishment, then those same rules should apply. That to me is completely different, and I could be wrong. That to me is something completely different than what is sitting in front of me right here, right now. I think that if we're going to speak to legacy so that it is not confusing to, to the public, right? Um, or to council, that if we're going to speak about legacy, then we need to have that separate from what this is in front of us right now. What I mean is if you have a particular establishment in which this is referring to, then we do it on a case by case basis. You name it, and then we deal with it accordingly, and if we grant whatever it is you're asking for, then we grant for it. This is confusing and this is all over the place. I don't, I, I'm looking at it like, well, you say in legacy, but we're talking about a thousand feet moving this, moving that, East Trenton, coming downtown. And then here is what it is. When I asked the question, um, about whether or not Mr. Garcia, our custodian of records, as well as Detective Cologne, who we had on the phone, if either of them were consulted with this at all, the answer was no. And I feel as though they should have had part in this. The police director should have had some input in it as well as other key people. Nothing should come before us unless the key people who are, are a part of this have the conversation. This was put here in front of us. We're looking at it. We're trying to dissect it. Everybody's trying to be nice and tiptoe through the tulips. It needs to be fixed. I do agree that it does need to be pulled. It needs to be worked on, and it does need to be separated. I'm all for the grandfathering of a situation depending on the establishment. I'm all for that. I'm not saying that I'm not. But if we're going to talk about moving from grandfathering one thing to moving something citywide, then we need to do our due diligence and take our time to make sure that what is presented before us is accurate, makes sense, and that all applicable parties are at the table so that we can hear and understand what it is that's being presented before us. So, thank you for pulling this tonight.
Council President, quite welcome. And everything that was raised here by this council, again, administration, thanks you guys for your due diligence, for your thoughtfulness, and the reason why it was pulled even prior to this discussion so, so we could address some of the issues that were raised here today and provide that clarity in either this all encompassing one or two separate ones. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
On your call, Madam President.
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia. You can go ahead and move down the list of the ones we, we, starting off twenty-four oh fifty was the one at the top of the list. Those that have questions.
Council President?
So, we are at...
Twenty-four oh fifty.
Uh, ma'am, I would like to ask Director Richardson to come to the podium, just ask her some questions.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Council. Maria Richardson, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Uh, so my question is, uh, so this is obviously a large appropriation, three point five million dollars, um, from ARP funding. And, um, as I know, as my colleagues, I'm sure, would say, there are a lot of things that need to be repaired, um, and then is throughout the city. You know, there's just hands down, there's a ton, particularly in our parks, et cetera. So, uh, could you please give us some good, strong highlights about what this money will be used for and why it's necessary?
Absolutely. Um, we are planning to use this money for, for different projects. And, uh, if you move forward in the docket, on the docket, you will see that we have probably ten, twelve, uh, resolutions awarding different contracts. Granted that this, uh, resolution would pass, uh, allocating the money. But some of the projects include installation of scoreboards, uh, repairs and installation of new fencing in various parks throughout the city. Installation of, uh, reparation and installation of new bleachers and player benches throughout most of our facilities. Installation of playground safety, um, installation and repairs of playground equipment throughout the city. We have, um, let me see if that is the same funding. No, that's basically it. But I am talking about, uh, doing a lot of work throughout all four wards. Some of that work is, um, no installation and some other, like in the case of playgrounds, we have to conduct safety, uh, inspections every year. And probably half of the work that is highlighted in those resolutions has to do with, um, safety protocols that we need to follow, particularly in the case of playgrounds.
And with the playgrounds, my understanding is, uh, regulations change every few years. So, the, the statute would tell you, you have to upgrade the playground?
Oh, absolutely. And, uh, sometimes we, we need to change equipment because now that equipment doesn't meet the safety requirements and that sort of things. So, we need to do, uh, inspections every year, and, uh, usually that comes with a high price tag.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council President? Can I have, I have a quick question while you're up here, Director Richardson? I see, I see you had, um, all of the parks listed. Is there any way that we can somehow add parks to this?
Well, the parks that are listed there are listed because either they came up in, you know, during the inspection, but that doesn't preclude work in other parks, right?
Can I suggest some? Yes, please. The Carlos Negron Park that's on, um, what's that, the Seik?
Carlos Negron is included in this.
Is it?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Oh, I must have missed it. Thank you.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, because I, I don't see it.
So, I'd like to say this, just this real quick. This, this resolution, Councilwoman Frisbee, was brought before us last year, right? And then, um, the administration pulled it and we questioned as to why, what was going on. This was key to our kids and it's key to our city. So, we are glad to see that this has been put back because it's little things, right? And, and what may seem small to some is major to others. And so, this is a good win for our youth, nice basketball courts fixing it up and resurfacing. Um, you really didn't do yourself justice, right, in your description and all the tremendous work that you're looking to do. This is going to be good for the city. Again, the repairing of the fencing, the scoreboards, everything. And so, I commend you. Thank you. And I'm glad that the administration listened, um, to us and, and put this back on to get this done for our community. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Director Richardson.
So, I just want to say, as echo what, uh, Madam President said, we were anxious for this to come back. We did not want it to be pulled. We recognize, um, the administration said they wanted to do some tweaking. And that's one of the things as a mother with a child who's differently abled, um, the fencing and the groundwork, where you are changing that to make sure that it is, um, safe for our children. A lot of people don't realize. They think, oh, you have dirt, you have grass, and that is enough, and it is not. So, seeing all of this, as I was reading through it, I think my smile got brighter with each and every, um, one that I read. So, I want to just say thank you to the administration for this, this I am anxious to see, um, come to play in our community. It is much needed, and I thank you for, um, just making sure that our children have what it is that they need to be safe, um, no matter how able they are.
Yes, Councilman Harrison. Ma, Council, Director Richardson?
Uh, the parks are utilized by all the families in this great city. So, I'm like, great to see that this work is being done. So, this is, this is, I think everybody on this council could be for this because it's about improving our parks that the families are using. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. And, uh, Council President, if I may, um, I shouldn't, I should mention that, uh, part of that funding, although it would not be reflected in the resolutions that are on the docket right now, but we will be building four, um, inclusive playgrounds throughout the city, one in each ward.
Council Vice President, do you want to say something about your park?
Thank you, uh, Madam President. No, I mean, I just, I'm just really excited about this, um, you know, reviewing all the parks that were named. I, I have highlights on the paper of all parks in the south or close to the south ward particularly. And, um, I just want to, I'm very, very thankful, um, that one park that I did not see on this list was able to be included, Orange Street Park. Thank you very much. That park is highly blighted. Um, we've done cleanups around that park. There is literally nothing in that park. Um, we have students in schools, um, around that park that just want somewhere to walk to, to be able to, you know, have recess or just play in. And, um, I've been asked particularly by students, and it really broke my heart. So, I'm very, very thankful, um, that that was able to be included in this, um, along with, you know, Third Street Park, John Beach Park, um, Lamberton Park, Cat Palm Park, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so, job well done. Thank you very much, uh, Director Richardson, for, uh, being able to include so many parks throughout the city of Trenton in this. Um, our kids and our families will be thankful. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Uh, Council President, I believe for our next resolution with questions would be twenty-four oh five, is, are we at twenty-four oh five two?
Madam President?
Yes, twenty-four oh five two, yes.
Okay. Um, I just had one quick question, which I did ask in docket review. I just wanted to know what the seven percent valuation, um, numerically looked like that we were getting annually that was plugged back into infrastructure, demolitions and things like that. What does that number look like? What does it look like since, um, I think this has been since twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen? What does that number look like that we are putting back into our infrastructure, our demolitions and things that, of that nature? What does that number look like, the seven percent?
Okay, um, um, good evening, Madam President, Council. Adam Cruz, Business Administrator. Unfortunately, I was not, uh, docket review on Wednesday, so, um, maybe Colin can address that concern.
Uh, good evening, uh, Colin Cherry, Assistant Business Administrator. Uh, if I may, Madam President, uh, it's approximately four hundred thousand dollars. We had three hundred and sixty-two thousand in twenty-two and three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, uh, in twenty-three.
What was the twenty-three number? I'm sorry.
Three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars.
Thank you very much. And all of that, that is the seven percent valuation, and that is what goes into infrastructure demolition and the like, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Or rather specifically, it will be once this trust is set up. That's what we've collected so far, and this, uh, action seeks to establish a trust so that we can put the money in that trust and then use it for the purposes delineated in the trust.
So, for clarity, the two sixty-two in twenty twenty-two?
Three sixty-two.
Three sixty-two in twenty twenty-two, um, that is, um, that will be in addition to the three ninety-seven in twenty twenty-three?
That's correct.
So, that is, okay, there's a, okay, over seven K valuation. Okay, seven hundred K. Thank you very much.
And we do expect, Madam Vice President, for that to continue. We have no reason to believe that that's going to go down. That's, we just take seven percent of whatever is collected. So, we in fact expect that as we're recovering from the pandemic, those numbers might even, even go up.
Thank you for gathering, gathering that information for me, Mr. Cherry. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Cherry, can you say those numbers again, please?
Three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two.
Two dollars for calendar year twenty-two and three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars for calendar year twenty-three.
Um, Madam President, there, there should be a memo attached to the resolution, uh, that explains all of that. I would think. It was, it was sent to the clerk office. I'm putting Brandon on, uh... But if not, then we can distribute this memo before Thursday, so that's not a problem.
Nothing with the numerical breakdowns, dear.
I blame you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council President, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Director.
Just, just point of order, um, when these questions are resolved, I don't know if it's council's desire to make a decision.
To the consent agenda.
Yes, Council President.
Thank you. All right, so for twenty-four oh five oh, can it go on consent agenda? Yes, so twenty-four oh five oh will be consent agenda. Thank you. Twenty-four oh five two? Consent agenda? Thank you, consent agenda. All right. So, we're on twenty-four oh five five.
So, uh, Madam President, yeah, I might have a question.
Okay. Oh, five, five.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Williams has the question, um, CVP.
Steve Wilson, Trent, please.
Thank you, Director. So, my question is, uh, regarding this, and I say this with no malice or sarcasm, my question in any way, shape, or form, but given the time sheet issues we've had in the past year, I know some folks are going to ask, uh, do you happen to know what kind of security features we would have on this software? Uh, so that something with off, off duty, which I know off duty, um, I would presume is the city's not necessarily paying that money. A private entity would be booking a police officer to guard their location. That, um, it would not be something that someone could easily go and change hours and stuff like that.
No, thi- this is, uh, totally separate from that issue. Um, this company, um, Visual Computer Solutions, um, we are, we have contracted them, this ordinance, or, or, I'm sorry, this resolution passed December seventh. There was, just happened to be a typo, um, in the description, um, which was relative to the fees being administered by Visual Computer Solutions. This is jobs for Blue. This will be the entity that hires our off-duty officers, um, at no cost to the city. They will have an eight percent, uh, administrative fee, and any vendor who contracts with, with them, i.e. contracting with the city for extra duty employment, if they pay with a credit card, it'll be an additional four percent fee. So, it's, 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 uh, kind of akin to when you, uh, go to an ATM machine and you have an outside credit card and then charge your additional fees. Kind of the same, same thing.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other questions?
Can we move into consent?
Thank you. It's moving to consent. Thank you. Twenty-four oh five seven? Question? Okay, so twenty-four oh five seven is on consent. Thank you. Twenty-four oh five eight? Question?
Yes, sir. Um, so, my quick question is, I know a lot of folks are going to probably ask in the next few days. I know this isn't Beyonce or Taylor Swift kind of money. So, uh, do you have any idea what type of type, and I think it's an excellent idea, uh, what type of entertainment this would, uh, help us attract?
This wouldn't be creating new events. This would be, uh, supporting the, uh, events that are already here and helping guide. We have a lot of events in the city that don't, we don't capture any economic impact from because they're in the middle of a park. Nothing against parks, but they're in the middle of a park somewhere. There's no businesses there. So, this is ways to encourage groups that are doing events to also think as maybe a secondary goal, how can we get this money to impact the businesses around there? So, the business, so the event coordinators that do events like that, then we're going to give them some sponsorships.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I'm sorry, can you state your name and the department you're representing, please?
Yep, Eric Maywar, uh, Division Economic Development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving that back on consent. Thank you. Twenty-four oh sixty-one? That you, Councilwoman Williams?
There's a lot of things to ask you about.
That's all right. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So, I did get, um, a question from a constituent. I'd like to ask this question, Director. Um, so, why is, um, why is natural resources and culture hiring a company to demolition anything? Isn't that something another department does?
A good question. Um, probably two years ago...
Good question. Probably two years ago, the HUD programs, CDPG, Home and ESG, were transferred to the Department of Recreation. So everything that is basically funded by CDPG comes through my department. And we are very involved with this type of projects. For, we have been for the last two years.
So the money would come to you through CDPG and then actually go to the department that has to do the demolition?
No, actually, I hire, we have a consulting company that you approved, I think, during the previous, the previous meeting. We hire in genuity. It's a requirement from HUD that we have a consultant, a demolition consultant. And then this is to actually award the contract to the company that will be doing the demolitions. But I will be the project manager for that. I have been the project manager for CDPG and, and Home for the last two years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just, I am really happy that this project is before you because the previous council rejected the project and we have to do environmental review again for this project. So this is huge for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We can move that to consent. Thank you. 24071?
I'm sorry, guys, there's a lot of interesting stuff tonight. So I have that.
Director Richardson?
Sorry, Director. But this was, it's actually something I'm very excited about because usually when you see Green Acres, you see other towns in Mercer County getting that money. But I'm really excited to see that we're getting it for Antique and Square and Acid Free Greenway. So if you could talk about, because it's such a great number, $7,288,000. Can you tell us what that's going to be used for? So folks, you know, who are going to see this streaming, I would really like you to explain what's going on.
Yes, actually, I have to say that Green Acres have been really, really great to the city during the last, I don't know, many years. We get a lot of funding from Green Acres, and they allow us the opportunity to apply for that $7 million grant to complement the money that we already have at hand for the Acid Pink Greenway. The cost of the whole program, and I would love to have the opportunity to present the whole project to, to this council, would be around $24 million. Tico Square, the Taylor Street, a portion of Enterprise. That would be $24 million. We need, we have about $10 million right now. So this $7 million will put us really close to, to the goal to be able to complete the soccer facilities, the skateboarding facility, some multi-purpose fields there, and the park itself. So we are really hoping that we are able to get this $7 million to advance those projects within the next, the next three years.
So this was, this is the money going to the project that you presented at the RISE Center several times in the past?
Yes, that is correct.
And my other question, for the remaining about $7 million, do we need to apply for more grants?
Yes, and we are actually right now waiting for an opportunity to apply for the $12 million grant that has not even been released yet. But according to one of our consultants, the city has a great possibility of getting the grant as well because almost all of those projects are, all of those projects are almost show already. And so that is a great opportunity for funding purposes. You know, projects that are not in the planning process but that have already the design and permitting completed. And for almost all the projects, we are there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Richardson. So we'll move that to consent agenda as well. Thank you.
Are there any other items, Madam President?
No.
Okay. And with that being the case, being through resolutions into ordinances for first reading, which I believe we've gone over, with the exception of 15, I imagine there are no questions on that, I take it as well?
Madam President?
Councilwoman Edwards?
I do have a question on this. Just for clarification, because the language threw me off a bit. We're adding a new section to this. Number one, it says, "No person or entity within the city of Trenton shall possess, keep, maintain or harbor any exotic species of wildlife without first obtaining a permit pursuant to blah, blah, blah." So then number two goes into, "No person or entity within the city of Trenton shall possess, keep or harbor." And then it goes on to list everything. So are, I'm trying to determine whether that kind of contradicts number one, where it says that they have to get a permit to have these animals, but then we say they can't have these animals. But I don't have a problem with that. But what I want to point out is roosters and chickens. We do have very responsible families in the city that have chickens that lay eggs and they keep the eggs and they use the eggs in Mill Hill. And it's a very nice part of the Garden Tour every year, and they offer free eggs to people that come visit their home. They have a nice habitat, it's very clean. And I'm wondering if number two says they cannot have it at all, but number one says they need a permit. I think that they will be confused on whether they can have their chickens or not, or whether they should get a permit to keep their chickens. So I think, well, not that I think, that I would like to suggest that we allow certain, we allow by permit the chickens or roosters or whatever to responsible people as long as their, their habitats are clean, they're providing adequate space for these animals, and that their intent on what their use is for them, whether as a pet, as livestock for eggs and things like that, or restaurants, maybe even having live chickens to use. We also have a farm in the city of Trenton that may, you know, how can I say, in, you know, provide different services down the line, maybe horseback riding or something like that, a petting zoo, who knows? I don't want us to, like, keep people out that are responsible, at least for chickens.
Council, Council President, may we respond briefly? I think this would benefit by email amongst council, obviously, and proper numbers of Mr. Koloji because I believe this is a council-sponsored ordinance.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, this, I'm sorry, this was an ordinance that was proposed by Councilman Harrison. We had circulated it to the entire council, understanding that, you know, because of the issues involved, that there may be differences and little things that needed to be tweaked. So it can still be introduced Thursday. If anyone proposes any changes, I'll be happy, you know, to incorporate them into the ordinance. And then there would have to be a formal motion on Thursday night to move to amend the ordinance to include the new... Well, actually, we're introducing it, so there would be a motion to introduce the ordinance that contains the additional items. So if anyone has anything on the animal ordinance, if they can get it to me tomorrow, we'll have it ready to still introduce for Thursday if we can.
Awesome. So like, my interpretation, because I'm no attorney. So my interpretation of this, am I interpreting that correctly? That number two says that we, they absolutely cannot have any of these animals at all? But number one says, under NJAC, they can have these specific animals?
Well, Councilwoman, you know, this was like the first pass. We just tried to, you know, come up with a list of animals that, you know, there were different complaints about and things like that. But then somebody raised the issue, well, what if somebody is only raising a certain number of these animals for sale? Or what if this, or what if that? And, you know, so now it's starting to grow little numbers and nominations. But like I said, whatever suggestions that you have about amending, amending it, if you get them to me, I'll be happy to incorporate them. And then, you know, the council can move to introduce it as amended on Thursday, unless it's going to be such a major project that we can't get it done by Thursday, but we'll try.
Okay, and is the NJAC 7:24-4, is that spelled out entirely in the original ordinance? Or is it just that? Is it just the code? I would like for us to recommend that we have the entire code language included and not just the title because we're like doing a little extra legwork, looking up codes.
This, this entire ordinance essentially adds a new section to our already existing animal ordinance that doesn't really address very, you know, specific types of things that you can no longer have. And I see that the version that I have in front of me is probably slightly different than the version that I submitted to the clerk.
We were during docket. During docket review, we were asked to be...
Cutting some animals out?
Yeah, well, and included some from the original, original draft.
We left crocodiles in, which is probably a good thing.
Yeah, crocodileia.
Crocodileia?
Yeah.
I didn't know what a crocodileia was, started researching.
Elephantine.
Elephantine, yeah. Yeah, that was another one.
Definitely.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Kay.
Okay, whatever suggestions, we'll get it done for Thursday.
We'll make sure of it.
Yes, Mr. Harris, Councilman Harrison.
Regarding, regarding the animals that are listed, can we reach out to Animal Control to get their intake? Because as far as I know, chickens are not allowed in the city of Trenton. But I would like to see the Animal Control's input.
Okay.
Okay.
So well, you can reach out to Animal Control, that's fine, to find out. I was going to make a suggestion, I mean, I can do it in writing as well. But in number one, to Councilwoman Edwards' point, where it said about harboring exotic species of wildlife, right? If we could maybe separate what those exotic species of wildlife are from what you're prohibiting in number two. Because like, I don't know if a chicken is exotic or not, right? So I think that you'd emu, yeah. But if we're going to do it, then maybe we can separate or name a couple of, name the exotic species that you just, you cannot have it without the permit. And then in number two, say, okay, and now you can't have this, and, and name what that is. So I can put that in writing as well, and I think that maybe that could kind of help us a little bit with this.
Council President, if I may, again, it's, it's not, being it's not an administrative, administration...
It's us.
Yeah, I was, I'm just, I'm just making a, being the input and kind of the added revisions and inquiries that we have. But maybe we want to table this until those discussions can be had and you guys can have an all-encompassing resolution.
Okay. Councilwoman Harrison? Can you, Mr. Garcia, can you ask Councilman Harrison? We'd like to table this just until we can amend, you know, or have this, this done?
Councilman Harrison, are you able to hear that? Councilman Harrison?
Well, we could keep going till, I mean, just everybody turn in what they want for Thursday, till by Thursday. Just turn it in tomorrow. We don't have to table anything. We can just get... So Councilman Harrison, we're going to put our recommendation...
Yes, Councilman Harrison, hold on one second. Are you able to hear the Council President speak?
I can hear it now. I can hear you talk.
Okay, you're able to hear me? Are you able to hear her? Hold on one moment. Go ahead.
One second. Councilwoman Williams has something she wants to say real quick. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Just three quick things. One, there are chickens in other parts of the state, not just Mill Hill. They're in Hilltown.
Right.
I do agree with having a way for people who want to live healthy to have their own eggs being produced. But there's a way for that to happen, but I totally respect what Mr. Harrison's trying to do. Secondly, this originally, this issue came up originally with the issue of chicken droppings being hosed out into a sidewalk, into the street. Then Chambers Burger, if I'm not mistaken. So that is an issue. I would like to say that if we are going to allow people to have these in the proper cages, et cetera, to get a permit, perhaps have an inspector, have a clearance by an APUC to make sure they're, you know, they're hand... Also being humane to the animals, to the chickens and hens. And then finally, having had neighbors who brought a rooster and had a rooster at 5:00 in the morning, you don't want to live next to a rooster, so that would not be something I would like to support. I don't think that's fair to neighbors, much as it's cute.
Thank you. All right, so everybody will draft your recommendations and turn it in to Mr. Koloji tomorrow, please, so that we can go ahead and move forward with this on Thursday.
Keeping in mind that this whole thing came about because of roosters, chickens and emus.
Emus, right.
Right, but none of those are in the ordinance now. So I just want everybody, you know, to give it, give it some thought and come forward with whatever you want to come forward with and whatever council's agreement is it is.
Thank you. So everyone will have your comments by tomorrow, so that way we can bring this forward on Thursday. Okay, thank you, everyone. Go ahead, Mr. Garcia. Thank you.
Certainly. Moving on to, actually, Madam President, at this time, I believe we've reached a point of executive session.
So I'd like to make a change in the agenda really quickly, if I may, since we don't have any outside attorneys present tonight. Is that true, Director Bridges? Thank you. I'd like to move civic comments up, and let's get to that part right now, please, while we have an audience here.
Sounds good, Madam President, and you may start with whomever you wish.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Well, I don't have much to say tonight, but thank you all for being present. I do want to say thank you to Dr. Pruitt for being here and doing her presentation. She always has a wealth of knowledge, and I love the stuff that they're doing. And also, I wanted her to actually bring up that they're hiring at Capital Health. So if anyone is looking for a job, please go on to the website for Capital Health because they are hiring, and they have a lot of positions that are vacant. It's like 600, right? Yeah, 600 positions that are vacant, so anyone looking for a job opportunity, please visit, visit their website. Where's my, thank you. Also, Director, the Homeworks Program, of course, I think most of us are in support of that. I've also had some of my students go through that program, and it is excellent. I see a change in growth in all of the young ladies who participate, so kudos to them, and I'm all in support for that, the funding for Homeworks. Director Richardson, thank you so much for always applying for money. We, you seem to always get all the grants, and I just want to say thank you for that, especially when it comes to the recreational piece and everything else, everything that's under your department, but thank you for that. Thank you to all for being present. A couple of announcements this week. I had it written down. This week, we have... The, oh, the Fourth Centuries of African-American Soldiers this weekend will be from February, February 24th at the Barracks Museum, and that's from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. There's also the Second Annual African Mask Making Family Workshop, which will be February 24th also, and that's at 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and that will be at the Trenton City Museum, which is 99 Parkside Avenue. And I believe that's it for today. Thank you all for being present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Is Mr. Harrison, or I guess...
I'm gonna get to him. Okay. Thank you.
So I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight. This is a real great meeting. Hopefully, we've shown people that we can work well together, we can disagree without being disagreeable and be professional. And that's really important, particularly for our city that needs so much. I want to also just take a moment, ask everybody, keep Mr. Willie Smith in your thoughts and prayers. He's under the weather at the moment. Many of you may know him from the American Legion. He's a great man, does so much for our city, so we'll hope that he's on the mend soon. Just a couple of quick announcements. Tomorrow night is Northwood CPAC meeting at Galley Baptist Church, 440 Martin Luther King Boulevard from 5:37. Please join us. Police Director will be there with us, as well as EMS Director Grady Griffin, so we can learn about how EMS and the TPD work alongside each other, and also even with disaster preparedness. It will be a great conversation. I know we'll learn a lot tomorrow night. Just want to echo what my colleague, Councilwoman Gonzalez, said. Director Richardson, thank you for hunting in every corner of the world to get grant money for coming into the city. I know we have a lot of staff who do that in the city, but you are very, very talented. Your department's very talented. If you need a, a grant administrator or someone, you know, I hope we can find one to help you because we need the money here, and it's very important. So thank you. And finally, so this year is going to be the 80th anniversary of a very important judicial decision, Hedge Path Williams v. Trenton, and on the 28th, there will be a celebration... Hedgepath Williams v. Trenton. And on the twenty eighth, there will be a celebration to, and also a dedication for uh this momentous case, which in nineteen forty-four, if you don't know, was the Brown v. Board of Education of New Jersey, where uh two young African American children were not allowed to be enrolled in what's now Junior Two. It's a school that I grew up with a hundred fifty feet from. And uh it's very, very important because rather than take it and just turn around and make their kids drop, walk two and a half miles to a Lincoln School, the parents decide to fight and sue in nineteen forty-four. Ten years before Brown v. uh Education, Brown versus Board of Education. And uh fortunately, to the judicial minds of that day, uh made sure that the case got heard properly by the State Supreme Court. And the State Supreme Court ruled correctly that it was discrimination. And by the ruling, that desegregated the schools, uh public schools in the state of New Jersey. So if you have time, uh next Thursday, next Wednesday rather, on the twenty eighth, I believe it's open to the public, the celebration uh will be uh starting, I believe, at eleven o'clock at Hedgepath Williams, formerly as Junior Two, please join uh because it's important. Um, if had this case not gone as it did, had not New Jersey desegregated, this would have been the case that maybe a third grade marshal would have had to argue in front of this uh Supreme Court of the United States. So um Trenton's made a lot of history and this is a very important piece of that history, not just George Washington. So thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night, be safe, and I hope to see you again on Thursday, if not, another time. God bless.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Frisbee. Oh wait, no, I'm sorry, Councilman Harrison, then Councilwoman Frisbee, thank you.
Thank everybody tonight for coming out to this wonderful meeting. Um, I'm grateful to see we're getting more money for our parks, doing more demolition, take down properties in the city that need to come down. But I also um would like to say there, uh this Friday, um February twenty-third at Use Funeral Home, um Mister McCray, um the wonderful man from Five Ten Stevenson Avenue for many years, he's been helping feed people over in the West Ward. Um, blessed man, he had passed away. So if, if anybody, and I think everybody knows Mister McCray, please, if you're able to come out, it's gonna be at the Use Funeral Home, three twenty-four Bellevue Avenue, eleven AM, uh calling hours nine AM. So please, if you can, come out, Mister McCray. It was a blessing. Um, he's a light, he was a light for the people of this great city. And uh everybody's heart should be touched because he did a lot of things to help bless fortune in this great city. So my prayers are for Mister McCray and everybody that goes there to volunteer. So thank you and have a blessed evening.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
So I want to, I'm not gonna echo anything that my colleagues have already um said. Uh, want to just thank everybody for coming out here this evening. Um, I'm excited for the resolutions that have come before us um for how we're gonna be moving our city together. Um, I'm so excited about it. I, I, I get excited really about our Parks Department, so I'm very grateful for what our, not just our youth, but our seniors and everybody else in between will get to experience um as we upgrade and we give the quality of life um here. A facelift, so to say. Um, I want to say thank you to our Police Department for our Coffee with a Cop we had um this past Monday. Community policing is going on here in our city, people. We are doing a great work, they are doing a great work, they are out here, they are connecting with the citizens, they're connecting with the residents. We ask that you would give grace, we ask that you would come out, get questions answered, get to know them, let them get to know you, and let's uh grow together. Um, they're doing them all throughout the city, so I ask if you hear about it going on in the city. And you can get some free hot chocolate and hot coffee and some donuts as well and just good conversation. Um, also, I want to remind you that it is tax season. And for those of you who need your taxes done and you're making sixty-five thousand dollars or less, you can get your taxes done for free. One location is the Boys and Girls Club on Spruce Street. The second one is on Hamilton, at, at the Hamilton Public Library, One Justice Samuel Alto, Alto Way in Hamilton. The third one is Salvation Army in Trenton at five seventy-five East State Street. And the fourth one is at United Way of Greater Mount, uh of Greater Mercer. And that's at Quaker Bridge Road, thirty-four forty-four Quaker Bridge Road, Building Three, Suite one zero one in Hamilton. And again, I do have flyers for that. I want to thank Doctor Pruitt for coming out and doing a phenomenal job, um sharing with us what Capital Health has been doing. Um, there's so much more to it and she has been coming out to our community sessions that we've had. Many of us have been having our community award sessions or just in the community themselves. And she's been faithful at most every one of them. So I want to thank her for that and it's just been a great tool of information that she has been for us. I want to thank Natalie, I know that they left already, she at Homeworks and her colleagues. The work that they're doing with Homeworks is absolutely fantastic. If you don't know about them, if you haven't heard about them, you should take a little peek, just look them up. Their website is fantastic and the work they do with our young ladies is top notch. They don't give anything secondhand, everything, everything is quality. So I'm grateful for the work that they're doing and I'm excited for the grant that they also got. The two young ladies, I wanted to just acknowledge them, Noah, our fifteen-year-old, and Liliana, even though they're not here, how they spelt, um spoke, how they articulated, talking about internships and opportunities and investing in them. I loved hearing them say they wanted us to invest in them, acknowledging that they are our future. They are just that. So I want to just thank um them for taking that step, because it's not easy to come and stand up for a bunch of adults um and speak. So I congratulate them on that. And I had the honor of meeting one of the members of Hedgepath that came and spoke at our church at Great Mount Zion um two weeks ago. And I felt like I was in the midst of history itself, the way he opened things up. Uh, so I'm grateful for that opportunity. I have three other announcements and I'm done. Um, Healing in Harmony is having a free seminar for women and girls, support ages eighteen and up. Um, that's gonna be every first, third, and fourth Tuesday of the month from six to eight PM. And that's at five thirty-five East Franklin Street in Trenton. If you want a flyer, I have those. And also the um Trenton Community Street Team, they're holding their thesis on Thursday, February twenty-second at five PM. And that's at thirty-three Tucker Street in Newark. And there are also flyers here for that as well, both in Spanish and in English. Last item is if you're interested in being a homeowner, there's a program that is going to be held on March second from twelve PM to two PM at Great Mount Zion that will teach you how to obtain forty-two thousand dollars in funding to become a first-time homeowner. So again, that is on March second um at, from twelve PM to two PM at Great Mount Zion A and E Church, forty-two Pennington Avenue. Actually, it's gonna be at our Fellowship Hall, which is forty Pennington Avenue. If you are interested, you can see me and I will get you that. In closing, the City of Trenton's mission statement is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. And just my last note, um, I was not saying that um, just for clarity, that um Councilwoman uh Williams said we were saying that what you were saying was negative. What I was saying is I don't want a negative connotation to come on anything just because it's here in the city of Trenton. People will put anything that they associate with us and they will automatically um think the negative. And I don't want that stigma to be put on us. So just for clarification, I just was saying, let's not have it in a negative sight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you all for being here with us this week. Um, I just have a, a couple of things that I want to address. In the light of Black History Month, my comments are mainly gonna be towards that uh as a civil rights activist, it's something that is very important to me. Um, I don't, I don't do identity politics and things, but I was told I'm the youngest black and the first indigenous woman to be elected to City Council and that I don't take lightly, I take with great pride. Um, as a native to this land, um just seeing a democracy grow and people getting along and diversity means a lot to me. But it, I would be remiss if I did not highlight the fact that we even have a Black History Month because of the strides, the plight, the horror that my ancestors, both indigenous and um African American had suffered in the passage to this land and the building of this democracy that we call America. Um, so I want to say uh thank you to the City of Trenton for highlighting um some people of color that made pivotal, pivotal contributions to our country and to our city. Um, especially the younger people who don't always get to be highlighted while they're living. So I want to say thank you for highlighting people like Lakeisha Sutton, who I went to school with, Bridget Bitch, who I went to school with, um Sharika, she a little younger, I didn't go to school with her, but to be a sergeant and be so young as sergeant and a Mercer County prosecutor, um that's amazing work. And outside of her career field, she is a, a girls' basketball coach at TCA and they're undefeated in various things. So she does amazing work in the community. Lakeisha Sutton has been hands-on with the administration, helping to revitalize our local parks, our basketball courts, and the West Ward Community Center. And their attributes to our community deserves to be highlighted. And I want to say that um there were significant efforts made to highlight these people. And if there was anyone not on display, please don't charge it as something malicious or intentional or anything like that. We deal with a lot of resource issues where we need to build up funding to be able to do more and be able to display more. To highlight the attributes of every person, not even just African American in the city of Trenton, we would need more than just that small atrium. So I just would like to encourage people to be thankful and hi, as the administration highlights those that they have highlighted and not hold them um responsible for those that they haven't because it may not be of ill intent. Um, to that, on Black History Month, um I would like to, you know, go piggybacking off of what Councilwoman Williams said. And thank you for uh bringing up the event that is coming up. Trenton is historical. We desegregated our schools here. Two children started that, a thirteen and a fourteen-year-old, whose parents were members of the NAACP that took the charge from their children and represented them in court and desegregated Trenton Public School Systems. And then ten years later, our federal government desegregated schools. Trenton started that, just like the Revolutionary War pivoted from here in the right direction and built our democracy. Trenton is historical. And I want to say thank you to Superintendent Earl because with the redistricting, as scary as that was in the time it happened, I think also helped to desegregate schools. We have a lot of social classes in our city. We are very diverse, not just from our colors, but from our income and social classes. And being able to split people up, not just be in an age-appropriate environment and not having K through eight in the building and kids picking up bad habits for older kids, but it also takes them out of their neighborhood and puts them somewhere else. So now you have people from all different classes of, in different backgrounds and different groups in one building based on their grade and not where they live. And I think that was excellent. Um, thank you to everyone that came out to lunch with a cop, with uh Councilwomen Feliciano and Figaro and Kat Bergenheim. Um, this was our first one of a few that we're going to be doing. And it was a great turnout and I look forward to working with you two ladies and the rest of my council colleagues on various things, community outreach initiatives around the city. Um, here to partner with you all and work with you all, so I look forward to that. And lastly, oh, not lastly, there are a couple of events that I want to bring up. And it is the Sixth Regiment, sorry, oh, it's over. Oh.
I was getting there.
Can I announce these events? That's it. Okay, Sixth Regiment U S Color Troops, Four Centuries of African American Soldiers, February twenty-fourth at eleven AM at the Old Barracks. And there is a swearing in of thirty new firefighters on February twenty-sixth at ten AM at the Fire Headquarters, two forty-four Perry Street. Two thirty, okay, that was a change. Sorry, two thirty PM. And uh also there is a Board of Education meeting, if anyone is interested, on Monday, February sixth at five thirty PM at one oh eight North Clinton Avenue. And lastly, uh there is a celebrity basketball game called The Thunder Games, honoring neighborhood heroes and local entrepreneurs on March second at two PM at TCA or TCPA, I'm sorry, one seventy-five Leonard Avenue. And our very own Fire Director, Kenneth Douglas, is on the Trenton Talks team and will be playing basketball. And I am on a much better team playing basketball and do not underestimate me because I got a powerful three-point shot. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Figaro Kat Ber.
Hi, guys. I promise I'll be very brief. Um, my colleagues said it all tonight, so I just really wanted to speak to Homeworks. I wish they were still here. Um, that program is the first program that I've heard about, um, that's been closest to the College Fund Experience, which is, which was an awesome experience. I got to participate in as a high school student where we got to stay on campus at Trenton State College um throughout our summers and take classes um on a college level. We got to experience what it was like to live on campus. Um, you know, and then take classes on Saturdays throughout, so it taught us a lot of responsibility. So kudos to that program. I would really love to know more. Um, I, I would love to know the criteria for admission to that program. Um, and are the credentials celebrated enough to where it shows up on the college resumes? Um, does it illuminate for college scholarships and things of that nature? Um, and the fact that they knew who City Council was and what we do, that was, that was pretty awesome, because I didn't know what it was at their age. So um, other than that, I just want to say that um, thank you Director um Wilson um for participating with us for Lunch with a Cop. Again, I echo my colleague's sentiments. It was a very celebrated event. There were so many officers that show up, so many people who showed up. Uh, we had officers uh working the, the, the takeout window. We had them behind working the register, uh stealing money. It was, it was awesome. Um, but it was, it was a great showing of, you know, community, uh just community togetherness. Um, and to um be at a location that had not had that experience before, that was also great in the South Ward. Um, that McDonald's on Cass Street, they were very appreciative to owners. Um, so again, thank you to my colleagues um for allowing us to do that and, and bring that together. Um, and that is all I have for tonight, so you guys have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for staying tonight. We appreciate you, we appreciate your time, we appreciate your presence. We appreciate your professionalism, your care, your dedication, your commitment. We appreciate you. Tomorrow night, Trenton Central High School is back to school night. Parents need to be there, because I got to be there. So we need to be there, five thirty PM to seven PM. Come and show up for your children. So I'm encouraging the parents to please come out. There's nothing worse than us going to the school and sitting there and we just look at ourselves. So for those parents that can, please come, we'd love to see you there. Um, I'd like to say that uh shout out to Bruce Boyd. He's been doing his Black History Month uh screenings and panel discussions. I got to sit on a panel discussion with Brother Gene Bowie and Shane Hutton at Mercer County Community College where we watched the documentary, The Thirteenth Amendment. It was very telling and, and triggering and a, and a lot of things. It gave, it gave us a lot of emotion as we watched, right? Um, so I encourage everyone, he has other things that are coming up. Check out Bruce Boyd and what he has going on. And if you can make any of his presentations, he actually like takes you back to certain places to make you feel like you are there living in the moment. And so our history is American history. And so I want us to know and understand everyone's culture and history, not only during certain months, but when you have opportunities to come to City Hall to celebrate, when you go to Mercer County Community College to celebrate, when you have other people that are doing things, please take advantage of it because it's all of us together that help make our nation great. Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club, excuse me, of Mercer County, the Youth of the Year program is happening on March the first from six to eight at ten forty Spruce Street. I encourage everyone that can to please go out and support the organization and to support the students as they come forward and they, they show off their public speaking skills. It's a wonderful program. My daughter was actually Youth of the Year, um which helped give her great scholarship money and opportunities as she went on while she was in high school. Tomorrow, tomorrow, Never Settle for Less is having their Tomorrow, tomorrow Never Settle for Less is having their financial literacy workshop at uh, Calvary Christian Fellowship Ministry. Six eleven Parkway Avenue is not tomorrow. I'm sorry, it's Saturday. I'm sorry about that. Saturday from nine thirty AM to eleven thirty AM. They're having their financial literacy workshop for adults, budgeting, banking, investing and more. And this is through the Office of Returning Citizens. So please come out, um, for those that it is applicable for and participate. Tomorrow night at Calvary Christian Fellowship Ministry is the food pantry. That they're having at the same location, six eleven Parkway Avenue. And they're also having a free health screening on site. Pastor David Cox and his wife have wonderful food that they give away. It's good food and the line normally is around the building. They also had branched out and are so diverse that they actually got Spanish translators there because the population had changed such. That everybody's there and they want to make sure that they are inclusive of everybody. Thank you to everybody that came out for Lunch with a Cop. We had a good time. You heard what they said about it. We appreciate everybody for taking part and looking forward to doing even more throughout the community. I just thank you all for coming out tonight and for being diligent um, about the city. And about the things that need to be done in the city. And I would like to thank all of my constituents that reach out to me. Um, to help to make our city better. Being on council is not an easy job. Um, we get a lot of complaints and a lot of things, right? Our city, our people suffer with a lot of different things. I love the fact that they get excited that they have people that they feel that they could now talk to. I get excited that they know that they have people that they could come to and that will help. I get excited, right? That when I think about the administration and those in position that are doing what it is, that you could do to the best of your ability to help us, to help the people. And I thank you all for that. It's been a long time coming. We're not here to stop anything or hinder anything. We're here to make our city better. I do believe that there is more for us to do. I know that there is and there's more for us to accomplish together. I love the unity between the various organizations that come out and participate to help. I love the fact that when we operate, there is no ego in the way to operate. That it is just about Trenton and that's what it should be about. Respect of title, when we in the streets doing what we do, we was in it before we became elected. And that's the beautiful part about it. We could see what it is that the people need. So when we come and we push back to administration and say, this is what we want and this is what we need. Fix the parks, fix the streets, fix this, fix that. We are residents here in the city as well. We know what our people need. And so we're glad and thank you for hearkening your ears to us and being diligent in the work. Thank you to DCA for working with us. I'm wrapping it up. Thank you to DCA for helping us out and keeping us moving in the right direction. I just want to say one more thing because I got to brag on Mr. Garcia. So he gonna let me have this extra minute. Mr. Garcia came back with a vengeance. Mr. Garcia is getting things in order. And I am proud of you and I'm thankful for you for stepping forward and walking into your leadership and doing your thing. For you holding up protocol and procedure, for you holding down your office, for you pushing forward. He's going to be conducting Oprah training and everything and he's going to be facilitating it and working it throughout and working through administration. So we don't have no problems. As we move forward, we're getting documents. Everybody's going to be held accountable and do what it is that they supposed to do. We're not going to turn to the clerk's office and say that it's his fault. We're not doing that. Everybody's going to take full accountability. So shout out to Mr. Garcia for everything that you're looking to do, everything you've done, getting our minutes and everything up to snuff, doing everything that it is that you have been doing. And for trusting the process. Thank you. We can go ahead and motion for executive session.
Madam President, may I have a motion to go into executive session?
So both.
Thank you. It's been moved. Second, I'll call the role, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattemberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison. Thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we do not anticipate a vote coming out of executive session.